Good evening. Welcome to the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees meeting dated Wednesday, October 18th. Item 1.0, call to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Broderick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Present.
Trustee Harris?
Present.
Trustee Lee?
Present.
Trustee Mahalik?
Here.
Trustee Morales?
Here.
Trustee Ellis?
Here.
Trustee Bazinski?
Present.
We have a form.
Item 1.02. Do we have any special guests?
We will at communications.
Okay.
We do have one. Isn't there an attorney or special guest?
Ah, there we go. Yes, we do have a special guest. Well, it's a special welcome, I should say. We are joined by our new board attorney tonight.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. So we're forward to working with all of you. I'm excited.
Awesome. They told you it was a 10-year commitment, 20-year commitment. What'd they tell you? Because, you know...
Mine's for each just...
That's a little bit more than I was expecting. We'll work on that. We can talk.
So, item 1.03, pledge of allegiance. And since it is your first meeting, would you do the honors of leading the pledge for us? The flag is right behind you.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.1, communications.
Chairman Bazinski, members of the board and the college community, thank you so much. I want to take the opportunity to invite to the podium a dear friend of JJC, and let me embarrass her just a little bit. And I'll tell you, Dr. Carla Guzman currently serves as the superintendent of Joliet Township High School District. She's been a great friend of the college, but has worked really hard to ensure that 12 by 12 by 12 and the dual credit offerings we offer our entire community, not just JTHS, is really the best initiative possible. So, a meeting for me that stands out is very early in my tenure, one of the very first meetings I took as president, was meeting with Carla and her assistant superintendent, Diane McDonald. And that meeting was very impactful, right? Carla clearly recognized all of the good things that JJC did in terms of dual credit, but really challenged us to be better. So, I heard that, I took that, and thank her for her partnership and her support of what we do in the dual credit space at JJC, and invite her to the podium to add some thoughts.
Thank you, and thank you for those kind words. And I feel when you came to this area, you reached out and you've been very receptive. I think sometimes you're probably like, "Man, I wish I wouldn't have given her my cellphone number."[207.12][207.12](laughter) But you did. So, no, it's really been a great relationship. I really feel like superintendents are being listened to when we're talking about things that we think would improve our current students and your future students and our community as a whole. And so, I'm very encouraged with the decisions that have been made for dual credit and 12 by 12 by 12, and the decisions that have been made, but the decisions that continue to be made, and then I know things that will be made in the future. Just to give a context, and I know you're going to be taking action tonight on a recommendation, but the waiver for dual credit is just so impactful for free and reduced, you know, education students. As the superintendent of Joliet, I have 6,800 students, and 60% of our kids, approximately, are free and reduced lunch. That equates to, you know, 4,000 students. And if we're able to realize our goals that we have in common, and every kid takes one three-hour dual credit course before they graduate, that equates to the cohort that's currently in high school right now to $150,000. And when you're low socioeconomic, any amount of money matters to a family and can be an obstacle to even signing up for a course. And so, I really feel thankful for being heard, because even though the $36 or the $48 seems like nominal, it adds up for our kids, and they have to decide between homecoming ticket, dual credit, they're going to pick homecoming, I'm just saying. And that's not what's in their best interest for their long term. And so, I just want to say thank you, and it's not just from Joliet, because I know I'm speaking on behalf of all the superintendents in the region, because we talk, we meet regularly, and we're so, so thankful that the administration and the Board of Trustees is listening to us, and we're all on the same page. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate what you're doing for our community and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Item 1.2, Board of Trustees approval of November as Native American Heritage Month proclamation. Mr. Velides.
Good evening, Chairman Bazinski, Dr. Namuel, members of the board, and members of the JJC community. It is my pleasure to introduce Ashley Klender. Ash is currently a third year at JJC and is a biology major with an interest in natural science. Ash is a sustainability campus intern and a CCC representative for Active Minds. Ash also loves walking the natural trails and soaking up the beauty of nature.
True. Thank you very much for having me read this. So, all right, so for Native American Heritage Month, whereas people of Native American ancestry have played a major part in the history of the United States, and whereas it is the goal of Joliet Junior College to provide its students with a comprehensive curricular and co-curricular educational experience, with consideration given the contributions of all socially identifiable groups within American history and culture, and whereas people of Native American ancestry have played and continue to play a vital role in the economic, cultural, social, political, and geographic development of the United States, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois hereby recognizes and designates the month of November as Native American Heritage Month in Illinois Community College District Number 525.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Item 1.3, recognition of retiree Marlene Kirchner. Dr. Amy Gray?
Good evening, Chairman Bazinski, Board of Trustees, and the JJC community. Whereas Marlene Kirchner has been a loyal and dedicated employee of Joliet Junior College for 29 years with service, retiring as secretary in the Health and Public Services Department. Her colleagues and friends also wanted to make note that they will very much miss her love of plants and holiday decorations, which would often take over half the department, but she did that because she wanted everyone to feel comfortable. They will also miss her quirky sense of humor. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois does hereby recognize and commend Marlene Kirchner for her distinguished service, as well as her diligence, perseverance, and loyalty in executing those duties as herein stated, adopted this 18th day of October 2023.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Item 1.4, the board is going to move into a closed session for approximately an hour under 2C1, 2C2, and 2C11.
Chair, could you please, just so the audience knows since it's recorded, what we're going in for?
2C1, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. 232, collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberation concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And 2C11, 2C11 is litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court of administration or administration tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis of the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
Thank you, Chair. So moved.
Second. Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, we're back. Item 1.5, return to public session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.6, public comments. Karen, do we have any public comments?
No, not that I'm aware of.
No public comments. Item 1.7, moment of silence. Dr. Namuel.
Chairman, forgive me. Might need one second. Karen, would you, do you have another copy of the moment of silence, please? Don't forget your additions.
Yeah, yeah.
Chairman, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I want to invite the college community to join me in a moment of silence for the following four individuals. First is Noah Weisfuss, the son of Stella Weisfuss, Senior Administrative Assistant for Student Development. Next, Price Keagle, JJC Professor of Drafting of 30 years. I'd like to invite the college community to join me in a moment of silence for a dear friend, Ruth Colby, who passed away over the weekend, the president and CEO of Silver Cross Hospital. And fourth, Wadia Al Fayyum, a six-year-old Palestinian boy who was brutally murdered in his home this week, just miles away from the JJC campus.
Thank you, Dr. Namuel.
Thank you.
Item 1.8, selected reports. 1.8.1, marketing communications and strategic engagements. Ms. Kelly Roder Tannelli.
To do the perfunctory raise and link, okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, Chairman Bazinski, Dr. Namuel, members of the board, and my fellow colleagues here in the audience. You know, I'm really thrilled to be here tonight and give you an update on my division. And I will tell you that this presentation is going to look just a little different than other times when I've come up and talked with you. I think it's really important to tell the story of who we are. And for some of you, particularly who are new on the board, it'll be an introduction to us, the team, what we do, and for some of you, maybe a reintroduction and a reminder of all of the great work that we accomplished throughout the year. So, I often remind my team that our work should always tie back to two basic tenets. We tell the story of the college, and we protect the college's reputation. In this work, we're so committed to the projects and data points and campaigns. Like I said, sometimes we forget to tell our own story of what we do. And so, that's what I want to do for you tonight, tell the story of the communications, marketing, and strategic engagement team. So, there we go. So, we're made up of two offices, Communications and External Relations, and Marketing and Creative Services. I'm not going to run through our division mission, but, you know, know that we create and shape the college's brand. We communicate with various stakeholders on various platforms and support the needed outreach and infrastructure for all of our institutional plans. This division was actually developed in 2017, and I was very fortunate to have been given the opportunity to take this team and build it into one. Previously, Communications and External Relations and Marketing, actually, if you can believe it, operated in separate divisions. So, it's been a real joy and a journey to kind of build up to where we are today. So, on your screen, you'll see that we have several, what I would call, key functions and responsibilities. And I'm going to tell you right now, and you may be guilty of this, okay? Marketing is not just about making things look pretty, okay? And PR is not just about spin. Branding and identity are essential to the work that we do. Brand promotes recognition. Brand sets us apart from our competition. Our brand represents our college and the experience that we promise our stakeholders. In later slides, I'll touch on key pieces of creative content, as you see up there in the bubble, content creation, that I want to share with you specifically tonight, because my guess is you probably don't see it, right? You're familiar with the registration guides we put out, maybe you've seen our commercials or our billboards, but there's some things like TikTok ads that my guess is some of you haven't seen. And so, those are the things I want to share with you tonight. So, I've invited my direct reports here this evening. They deserve a whole heck of a lot of credit. They start with heart, and actually, I can say that about my whole team. They start with heart, they're incredibly diligent, and will always do whatever it takes to make sure the job is done and done well. I'll give you a quick story at commencement. This was maybe two years ago. We had a real wrinkled banner behind the stage. So, we had people partnering with facilities. Where can we get a steamer? We got to make this look good for the students. These are the kind of people that work in my area. They care. So, I want to introduce them real quick. We've got our Director of Marketing and Creative Services, Robin Ballard. Hi, Robin. A little applause.[1028.18][1028.18](applause) Okay, okay. Next, we have Katie Smith, who is our manager of communications and media.[1037.18][1037.18](applause) And I have to say, the inevitable Carly Ringo, who is the senior admin assistant, my right hand, particularly when it comes to all of our FOIA requests and the new strategic engagement part of my role that I'll talk about in a little bit.[1058.83][1058.83](applause) So, I'm just going to tell you guys, I've never gotten that kind of applause.[1065.18][1065.18](laughter) So, you know what? I want to put some faces behind who this team is. We have 13 people, and the reason why there's so many pictures, it's so hard to get them all in one room at one time. But, like I said, they start with heart, they do the work, and they show up. And I just want you to see them and see who they are as I start to go on and talk about some of the key pieces and content that I want to show you. Oh, you know, real quick, if I could go back, this is something that I really wanted to touch on in this, media relations. And we're going to talk about that in a little bit. We have an award-winning media relations pitch that I'll touch on, but, you know, media relations is not just a successful pitch and getting a story in a paper. Media relations, and Katie will tell you this firsthand, is getting not one, but two WNBA basketball players to Joliet Junior College in a matter of 40 days.
Wow.
And getting some great engagement. So, it's so much broader, and that's why, these are the kinds of things I wanted to focus on with you today. And there we are. That's the segue that I was looking for. So, just two weeks ago, the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations held a conference, and this JJC team won six medallion awards. And you know why that's important? Because it was out of 540 submissions, it's multiple states, multiple categories, and these pieces are judged by our peers, but also outside industry professionals. So, it is a real honor to be recognized for our work in that space. And so, up on your screen, you'll see two of those award-winning pieces. I talked a little earlier. You guys, who doesn't, who wasn't at graduation, or who doesn't remember our 12-year-old graduate, Benny? Man, did he get some coverage. And I want to tell you, the kind of work that goes into a successful media pitch, okay? Katie had pitched this story weeks in advance, didn't hear anything, didn't hear anything, about an hour and a half before our commencement ceremony. We get not one call, not two calls, but three calls from Chicago media outlets that want to come here and interview young Benny and get footage. So, you know what Katie does? She makes it work. And in an hour and a half, grabbed Benny right as he was going to literally walk out and join the ceremony and got that interview. That's coordination, that's planning, that's teamwork, and we got to tell a great story about the power of what we can do here at Joliet Junior College. I'm also proud to share that since 2017, since we combined both the communications and marketing teams in this division, we've won a total of 24 medallions awards, and I'm, something I'm really proud of.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, types of projects. I talked a little earlier about, you know, kind of wanting to show you different things that you might not necessarily see. We often talk about reg guides, connections magazines, billboards, but I want you to know that marketing in particular does not just focus on enrollment-based projects. So, as you see here, we've got one of our actual kids' college students with a very cool branded JJC tattoo, not permanent.[1303.76][1303.76](laughter) You'll also see, you'll also see in the center, a piece that we did, we worked with Dean Cindy Vasquez Barrios' office. It's a piece that they hand out, I think it's the student handbook that we helped them with, and then, of course, you know, something that you may be a little bit more familiar with, a flyer for Discover JJC. So, creative design, something else that we focus on heavily, again, particularly on the marketing side of the house. The two pictures here that you see are also award-winning pieces. If you've seen the Here Are The Howl t-shirts, those were hand-drawn and designed by one of our graphic designers, who I'm proud to say is also an alum of the college. And then, the beautiful graduation backdrop was also custom-designed by Sean McGowan. He'll hate that I'm even saying his name out loud, because he doesn't like the attention, but this is all done in-house. We don't have to go out and ask freelancers or look for other firms or companies. This is, this is quite literally the vision of the creative people on this team, which, by the way, spanned from working here for 16 years, all the way down to just under a year, because we have Robin and Katie, they have their one-year anniversaries coming up. So, and of course, as you see here, more than 450 campaigns that we design annually. So, another thing that I'm really proud of, and proud of our team for, compelling writing. This is anything from ad copy, to of course, stories that you might see in connections, to digital ads, to, gosh, billboards. So, again, nearly 200 unique writing assignments annually. So, photography and videography, I worked for a really long time. This was a goal of mine. We did have an on-campus photographer that was not in our area, and we thought that there was a real opportunity there for synergy. And since he has joined our division, we produce all of our commercials, all of them in-house. We used to pay Comcast for that. We don't do that. We have the talent and creativity in-house to do that. Yes. Hank is amazing. You guys know Hank. I don't think he'd want, he's shy, he wouldn't want the credit either, but he does all of that. And as you can see, one person, 4,000 images, and just so you know, in our brand guide, we do not use stock photography. Every single thing that you see that comes out on behalf of this college is someone who has gone to school here, who works here, who is a student, is an alum, is a donor. That's a really critical part of our brand.
Thank you. That's good.
So, multimedia storytelling. I think most, if not all, of my team would tell you, the reason why we're in the work and do what we do is because the job never stays the same. How we were communicating five years ago even is not the same way we're communicating now. And our multimedia storytelling efforts are a big part of that. What you see here on the screen is our Instagram page, the college's Instagram page, that also recently, a couple weeks ago, received a medallion award from the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations. And the important thing to know about multimedia storytelling is that this is not just, hey, there's an event on campus, make sure you come out and check it out. This is about elevating our message and speaking to the key audiences that we've designated that we want to communicate to, right? So, traditional Hispanic students, parents of prospective students, Hispanic adult students, that's what we're covering. So, right now, in our digital marketing efforts, we have ads running on five different platforms. And particularly with Google Ads, we have ads that run 365 days, seven days a week. That's actually something that we didn't do before, that we're doing now. And so, what I want to do is show you something that unless you are on TikTok all the time, you probably haven't seen this, I'm going to show you our TikTok ad for Discover.
Wow. Nice.
Yeah. So, this is all, this is Hank, this is designers, this is our digital analyst. It's a team effort, and a drone. All right. So, again, just to kind of give you a sense, I've really been talking a lot about the quality that's very important to us, but I want to also give you a sense of the quantity. So, just the numbers here below give you a sense of the breadth and depth of work that we do across all platforms. And also, something else I really want to point out, and many of you are in the audience, we partner with so many departments across the college. So, again, yes, we do Google Ads to engage prospective students, to increase their awareness, to make them ask more questions, and maybe want to come visit Joliet Junior College. A lot of what we do here is supporting that internal work as well. So, new initiatives as we enter, well, finish up this past year and kind of come into this new year. You can certainly see, especially Dr. Namuel, some priorities there in terms of helping support the 12 by 12 by 12 program and launching roots and branches as well. Brand and perception study, I've talked about a little bit more internally than I have here at this dais, but we did just complete that. We surveyed over 500 individuals across our district. We have collected qualitative and quantitative data. The results are really interesting, so that'll just be a little nugget, and I'll come back with more later, once we've formalized a plan, how we want to implement that information and move forward. Also, I wanted to call to your attention, we've actually moved $30,000 of our So this is all, this is Hank, this is designers, this is our digital analyst, it's a team effort, and a drone. All right, so again, just to kind of give you a sense, I've really been talking a lot about the quality that's very important to us, but I want to also give you a sense of the quantity, so just the numbers here below give you a sense of the breadth and depth of work that we do across all platforms. And also, something else I really want to point out, and many of you are in the audience, we, we partner with so many departments across the college, so again, yes, we do Google Ads to engage prospective students, to increase their awareness, to make them ask more questions, and maybe want to come visit Joliet Junior College, a lot of what we do here is supporting that internal work as well. So new initiatives as we enter, well, finish up this past year and kind of come into this new year, you can certainly see, especially Dr. Navuoh, some, some priorities there in terms of helping support the twelve-by-twelve-by-twelve program, and launching roots and branches as well. Brand and perception study, I've talked about a little bit more internally than I have here at this dais, but we did just complete that, we surveyed over five hundred individuals across our district, we have collected qualitative and quantitative data, the results are really interesting, so that'll just be a little nugget, and I'll come back with more later once we've formalized a, a plan, how we want to implement that information and move forward. Also, I wanted to call to your attention, we've actually moved thirty thousand dollars of our ad budget to support more Hispanic language pieces. That's intentional, that's in line with our strategic enrollment management plan, that's in line with our strategic plan, and so as I say that, I want to remind you as well, we haven't increased our marketing budget over eight years. So this is all reallocating to align with what the college's stated priorities are. So strategic engagement, it was one year ago that I very fortunately and excitedly accepted an opportunity from Dr. Navuoh to help, you know, implement his vision of the college having a more formal strategic engagement program. And so I'm excited to share that we actually will have a formal strategic engagement plan, he and I are working on that, and that'll be really a roadmap and a blueprint for how we engage with our partners, and how we align that engagement with those partners with the priorities of the college. I can tell you that last year, we invested over two hundred and fifty hours of civic engagement with forty delegates from across this institution, representing or engaged with sixty organizations. So I can't do it all by myself, Dr. Navuoh can't do it all by himself, and so I really see this and some other technology that we're exploring is helping us be a lot more laser-focused and strategic in how we're connecting and when. So it's, it's really exciting, and in the time that I've been here, we haven't had anything like that, so I'm excited to see where this next year can take us. One other thing I just wanted to point out briefly are the pictures. One of the things that we want to try to define in strategic engagement is the difference between a delegate and an ambassador, an ambassador is somebody who you might see in that left photo, right? This is all of us, or a couple of us at Fiesta on Lancae, which was hosted by the Latino Economic Development Association. These are folks who are going to go to Romeo Fest, go to these events, and talk about the college, okay? Those are ambassadors, they're going to get on the parade float on a Saturday and go to Cornfet, or, yeah, Cornfest. On the right-hand side is something that I wanted to share, that, that I do personally, but just to show you the proliferation of opportunity that comes out of these partnerships. I'm currently the board president of the Boys and Girls Club of Joliet, and one of the things that we've been able to do, just, just since I've been involved there, so think about just, just this example, and multiplying that by forty people doing the same thing. We now have students that have work-study opportunities at the Boys and Girls Club every single semester, we didn't have that before. We've engaged members of our police department to come and provide training and, and serve on the Boys and Girls Club Safety Committee, so the impact is deep, and we've had kids from the club actually come to the college this summer, and they went to the planetarium, and they went to the maker lab. So these are those small things that, again, we don't really talk about a lot, but they make such a difference.
They do.
So now we're here. So thank you, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just want to say thank you for the detailed report, and for all of the different projects that you take on, so thank you, great information, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Trustee Harris, do you have any questions?
No questions, just a statement, I really enjoyed that, but it's really good to know you don't use any clip art or any art from outside.
No.
Know that everything is in-house, that's, that's really great.
Yeah, we're, we're very proud of that, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for participating.
Trustee Lee, do you have any questions, comments?
Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Trustee Broderick, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Do you have any further questions?
Sorry, I skipped the line, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, do you have any questions or further?
No, thank you.
Trustee Nancy?
Comment?
Sure.
So thank you for all the wonderful information you were able to connect and bring, and remind us why we do the work that we do, and how we are able to convey that message out in the community, and be able to connect to other community members and bring them into JJC, so thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Mahala?
First of all, I think making a kid get a tattoo on her face is really, really bad.
Shoulder.
For a college, I don't want to go that way either, so, is that a shoulder? Well, it's still not very good. I want to say, our designs are, they match up perfectly, and when I see a male piece coming from JJC, I don't even have to read it, I can look from far across the room and say, that's a JJC piece, and I know it, so they got a march, they got a match-up like that. Let me see here, that's, those, those are good, and I know, as you guys know, touches are important, I know we got that, that Google going on, I know that's, that's big dollar amounts, but those are touches. Do we have any metrics on, on those by chance, though? Like, anything like, because we are spending a lot of money each month on, on Google Rank, and my, or Google Ads and stuff like that, does that increase our rank too when they do searches as well?
Yeah, so we, we definitely have that information, in fact, mounds of it, that I actually meet with both sides of the house, and we talk about strategically, what do the numbers look like, where do we need, need to make tweaks, where do we need to make keyword tweaks, so we do have that, I, I wouldn't say I have something off the top of my head, but I could.
No, I'm not asking you right now, but in the future, I'd like to see something on there, but I know touches are important, is it, with, it used to be six to seven touches, now I think with kids younger now, it's probably ten to twelve touches each, and then on their cell.
In, in the middle, yeah, in the middle, and, and what I would say where we focus on, on that is our click-through rate, I can, I can tell you this, so I can't, I can't, I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head, but I can tell you that our click-through rate on every single digital platform we have, so that includes social, that includes Google, YouTube, all of it, we are above the education industry average.
So they stay on the page a little bit longer too as well, so, that's good, so. That's good to hear, nice to meet the team behind the lady, and you guys are all great ladies, and you're all doing wonderful work, and I appreciate it, so, thank you very much. And thanks for taking your time out of your day to come spend it with us, too.
Trustee Ellis?
I just want to say thank you all for everything you do, you guys do amazing work, and the students love the photo shoot, so thank you so much.
Yes, and you know, thank you, real quick, I forgot to mention that we do, we're engaging students a lot more in our marketing, like the creation of our Instagram posts, so it really is through a student lens, I forgot to mention that, so, thank you, and next time, I'll make sure to bring tattoos for the board.
Permanent ones, though.
Great to have Jake.
Got two kids at home, we're going to try to have.
And if you could have your department stand one more time?
Oh, yes. Then we can clarify.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item one point eight point two, the tax levy for the year 2023, Mr. Jeff Heath.
Just as exciting, just as exciting. Chairman, just as exciting. You keep the same level.
Let's give it to the fellows for Jeff.
Jeff Heath.
Good evening. We'll get this started. Basically, under the tax cap formula, this is the, this is the formula the college has to use, and it gives us what our tax rate will be, along with what our maximum extension would be if there was no new construction. So it's basically last year's levy, can be adjusted by consumer, the lower of Consumer Price Index or five percent, and then divided into the current year assessed value, less new property, and it gives you the tax rate, and that's applied to all property in the district, to give the final extension and collection. When the FY24 budget was built, back this past late winter, early spring, the assumptions used was approximately a six-point-two percent increase in operating funds, and that's comprised of, like I said, five percent under the tax cap, since Consumer Price Index was six-and-a-half percent last year, and then about one-point-two percent, or three hundred million, from new construction. The debt service levy is based on the referendum bond from back in two thousand and eight, we issued a bond in oh-nine, and then we refinanced it in nineteen for lower interest, so that levy is based on those resolutions, and that's about a little over a two percent increase, based on what was in the bond documentation. As we get further into the year, we start getting some preliminary numbers out of the counties, and have, especially Will County, since they represent about eighty-three percent of our taxing district from an assessed value, and based on preliminary numbers, existing property is going up about eight percent on average in assessed value, and new construction looks like it's going to be a little bit more than expected, three hundred and fifty to four hundred million. We're getting a bit of a bump this year, because the big Tiff District in Elwood will come in to the tax rolls as new property this year, because that Tiff ended last year. And then, like I said, the Consumer Price Index is known at this point. Under the tax cap, if we did not capture the five percent, even though our budget was based on it, it would reduce our current levy by a little over three-point-two million dollars. Since the prior year levy is the starting point under the formula, you lose that three-point-two million, plus any Consumer Price Index adjustments going forward each year, so basically after twenty years, it would accumulate to around ninety-four million dollars. For debt service, the twenty eighteen and twenty, twenty twenty-one alternate revenue bonds, they'll be abated in their entirety, because the capital assessment fee covers that debt service, the principal and interest payments, so what we're left was, is our twenty-nineteen GO bond, basically the referendum bond, and basically what was in the resolutions, basically last year levy was a little over seven-point-six million, this year, this year will be seven-point-six-eight-eight. What you'll see when you get further on, once the counties do the levy, the actual levy ends up slightly different than that. You know, Cook County has a loss allowance, some of the other counties, just from rounding, it ends up slightly over that, at least this past year, and like I said, the counties do corrections and adjustments, so I'll cover that a little bit later, too, so you'll see some of these numbers don't exactly match at the end from what was in the bond resolution. So this slide is just kind of showing, under the tax cap formula, what our levy would be, and the only variable in this is new construction, you know, at the far left starts with three hundred and fifty million, far right is up to five hundred million in new construction, kind of the second column, can't tell as much with this highlight, is probably kind of a little bit the best guess of where we'll be, you know, about sixty-eight-point-two million excluding debt service. Is a reference point, our budget was based on a levy of sixty-eight million, so, based on preliminary numbers with a little higher new construction, we should, should meet budget or be slightly over, is the expectation. From an individual taxpayer point, you know, we kind of started this slide back quite a few years ago, twenty-ten, with a two-hundred-thousand-dollar market value house, you know, again, after the recession in kind of two thousand and eight, nine, our existing property's assessed value was actually decreasing there for four or five years, and then in twenty-fifteen, we finally kind of started to see that start to swing, lower in the beginning, but you know, last couple of years have been a higher increase. You'll see kind of the third lineup, you know, what that average house would have paid JJC in taxes, and you'd see what, if that house assessed value moved the same as what the whole district did, you know, that that house, what, last year would have been approximately a little under two-hundred-and-nine-thousand, you know, if it goes up eight percent, it's going to be a little over two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand assessed value, that, you know, it would, the expectation is that house, if the EAV went what the overall did, it'll pay slightly more in taxes to the college, but the rate per thousand will go down, but since that house is valued more, the total tax bill will go up some. So the proposed levy is based on our budget, plus not quite one percent, and basically, new construction would have to exceed five hundred million to get to this levy, so the actual extension is expected to be slightly less, but we've always added a little bit just so you don't miss any of the new construction, because if you miss it, you can never capture Based on some questions, you know, this spring, when the tax bills came out, there's so many variables in property taxes, you don't know what it's going to be until you get the levieda report in March and April, but the college's overall property tax rate is impacted primarily by three components. The rate generated under the tax cap, there's true-up adjustments for estimations that are done by the counties, and Will County is the first one to finish their, their levy, so they do quite a bit of estimation for our other six counties, and then there's a add-back for basically tax appeals and protests that were awarded after the fact. So just kind of give a comparison, primarily just, this is just for Will County, you know, for the twenty-one and twenty-two levy, the tax cap calculation, the rate was identical, calced out the same, but we had adjustments in twenty-one for twenty that decreased it, but in twenty-two it increased it, so you end up with that kind of double effect there, and then kind of the adjustment for the tax appeals. See, when the county underestimates EAV, basically the tax rate ends up slightly higher, so then you got to give it back next year, and vice versa, if they overestimate the EAV, they've made the rate too low, so then they do corrections the following year. For looking forward to next year, because we actually have all counties have finished the extension now, Cook County was actually a little faster this year, Will County's estimations were very close, it's only about fourteen million dollars in assessed value, and about fourteen million on new construction, so it's going to be a very minor adjustment of funds we owe back, based on preliminary estimates, but based on this, since existing EAV appears to be going up eight percent, we're kind of capped at five, it's roughly, should expect around a three percent reduction in the tax rate, but until the final numbers are in, that's just an estimate at this point. So basically, next steps, basically asking the board to adopt a tentative levy tonight, we'll publish a notice in the paper between the first and eighth of November for the public hearing, and ask the board to adopt the levy at the November meeting, so we can file with the county clerks by last Tuesday in December.
Questions? Trustee Harris, do you have any questions?
No, answer mine.
Answer, perfect. Trustee Lee?
No, I have to say.
Trustee Broderick?
The only thing we need to be concerned about is where the estimated appraised value will come out on the homes, based on the fact that we did see an increase in valuation that we saw in the last tax bill, correct?
Well, I think what the question was last spring was more the tax rate.
The tax rate, but I'm talking about when we're looking, I see where the tax rate is, but for the property owners to say that if taxes go up, we're looking at the EAV, because we've seen when the last tax bill came out, that our EAV did go up, so that is going to be something that we apparently are aware of, but we know where our tax rate is, so we're still good, but it's the EAV that's going to have an adjustment.
Yeah, I mean, you were saying the tax rate stayed the same, but they're estimated, their, their appraised value of their homes has gone up since the last tax bill.
Right, because they're still, they were still escalating.
But that's going to drive no major change to itself.
Right, they've still been escalating.
Yes. I mean, it kind of goes back, and I think maybe this slide will somewhat help answer, you know, just, you know, if that average home last year, you know, was two-hundred-and-nine-thousand, would have paid the college two-hundred dollars.
Right.
If it goes up to two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, eight percent increase in assessed value, two-hundred-and-seven, two-hundred-and-eight dollars to the college, the rate will go down, but more than likely, yes, they'll, in additional funds.
Right, because I know a lot of us looked at what our appreciated values had changed to, which caused a severe increase to some of us, not because of the, the tax rate, but because of the valuations going up, so just making it clear.
Oh, yes, and.
She just wanted to say that we're not doing anything different in our religion, that you're going to blame the assessors or valuations offices, for that, so.
It ends up being how much your value differs from their average.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and it was funny, because even for tax appeals this year, we found out, even though people wanted to complain, there was no source of being able to do it, because the valuations were all escalating, so there was nothing to justify lowering the values. Thank you.
Trustee Morellis?
No questions, thank you for the report.
Trustee Nancy Garcia? Trustee Nancy Garcia-Guian?
Comment? Thank you for the detailed presentation.
Trustee Mahalik?
I think it was very exciting. I'm sorry. Personally, I think it was the most exciting report I've had. But no, no, I have to say, I am on the finance committee, and I know I only see a couple of B&amp;G people in the audience, so I can say this, but they are equally as good as my B&amp;G committee. I always praise them, so, so thank you for all the hard work.
You're already getting two tattoos, so...
Politically correct.
Trustee Ellis?
No questions, thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Wow. I don't think I've ever seen Jeff Bush so much.
I know. 1.8.3, the Faculty Union Report, Dr. Bob Marsink.
Woo, Bob!
It's the theme of the night.
I don't know how I can follow that. Hi, everybody. Chairman Wodzinski, President Nemo, rest of the board. Couple of quick things. Well, the first thing I want to mention, and I'll have a couple serious things to say tonight, and I'll try to, you know, stay, keep myself under control, but I do want to, and I did this in an email, but I want to thank President Nemo for sending out a really important email to the college community yesterday regarding the horrible incident in Plainfield, and also offering the support of the college to the students and the staff and the faculty. I thought it was an important message, I thought it was, had the right tone, and I believe it was very well received throughout the institution, so I thank you for that. Couple of quick things, I know we're going to talk, you'll be, tenure, people up, not necessarily for tenure, but up for renewals this year, I just want to reiterate that we have a very, a, not rigid, I don't want to use, a tough tenure process. And it's there, and it's there for a good reason, because we all, Dr. Gray, all the chairs, all the deans, we want good people here at JJC, and we want the process to be difficult. We want people who are going to be here to be here for the right reasons. And so I just want to reiterate that, and we do work together in evaluations, et cetera, and we talk about these things when it's appropriate. And we, as faculty, want to make sure that the people who we keep on are the right people, and they're going to be the right people for a long time. Because when you hire the wrong, when you keep the wrong person, that's a problem for a long time, okay? It's not just a problem for one year, or six months, or whatever. So we're glad to take part in that process, and we think it's a good process. And then, I appreciate Chairman Wodzinski giving me the little list here. There are two people I do want to mention, because I had to leave the meeting early last month, I just wasn't feeling well and didn't want to stay around and get other people ill or whatever. So, but there were, we lost two faculty members that were announced in the last month, and I want to say something about both of them. One, co-founder, Joe, Frank Alberico, who is really the co-founder of the criminal justice program here. If you talk about it last month, he started here in 1969 and left in 2006, so we're talking about a 37-year career. And I was talking to Sergeant Tom Glisten in the back just a few minutes ago, and just, and Tom said that Frank was probably the reason, or a very big reason, why he went on to get his bachelor's in criminal justice. And he impacted an awful lot of police and criminal justice people throughout this region. And so I wanted to make sure he was remembered. And if, this, I'll be all right in a second, I just, I'm, those of you who know me know I can get a little emotional, you know, I was telling, somebody real there says I'm the, who did I say? What was that? Was John, what's his name, the House Representative?
John Boehner.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm the liberal John Boehner. But I want to say something about Dr. Deb Fitzgerald. She, incredible, incredible instructor. She was good enough that she taught instructors. I mean, she, her students loved her, her, the people who worked around her loved her. And besides loving her, she was just an incredible, incredible representative of this institution, incredible faculty member. I think all of us would love to have the legacy that she's left here at JJC. And I had the opportunity to teach her, one of her daughters, Courtney, her daughter Courtney, in a film class, and really, you know, great, a great young lady. And I just didn't want that to go unmentioned, because I had to leave early last month. She, she not only was a great instructor, she's tremendous, and she supported incredibly, and this is selfish, but she supported me in my job. And she did it in, she didn't have to do it, and, but if I needed some help, or I needed somebody to volunteer for somebody, or for something, or the institution was looking for a volunteer, she was one of the first people to say, "I'll do it," you know? So she should be remembered, and I hope you all do know a little bit more about her now. So I was very proud to be a colleague of hers. So that said, I held it together pretty well today, for me. I do appreciate the opportunity every month to be with you and to speak, and I appreciate that opportunity. And I want to leave the podium now, so, bye.
Item 1.8.4, the Adjunct Faculty Union Report, Ms. Laurel Discol.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see everyone. From an adjunct's perspective, I really don't have a lot to say because things are going quite well. And sometimes no news is good news. You know, the Adjunct Faculty Center, the remodel is almost ready to go. We've got furniture and doors that lock, and we're very near a grand opening, so that's kind of exciting. The fall assignments, or, well, actually, spring assignments that are done in the fall are, again, moving along on schedule. People have things posted, and things are going well. So from our perspective, I really have a very, very short report. I do want to add one comment about recent events and my perspective, and I just want to thank everybody here and say how much I and all of us appreciate the stand that this college takes in being a welcoming and safe and supportive environment. Sorry, it's an emotional topic for all of us. The recent events have been so traumatic, and to be an island of safety is so important. So thank you, everyone, for that. And with that, I'll stop. Thank you for the opportunity, and I'll see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1.8.5, the Building and Grounds Committee Report.
We did not have a meeting this month, so we'll keep you posted next month on anything, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.8.6, Board Policy Committee Report, Ms. Michelle Lee and Ms. Garcia-Guian.
So I am going to just briefly go over the policies that are coming up for, that are going to be on first read. The Board of Trustees' Conflict of Interest, we did not change anything that is going through as is. The committees of the board, we changed the language for simplification and clarification. The sentence was a little wordy. We took some words out, reorganized it, sounds much better. Board Requests for Information, we changed to allow a 48-hour response time to the faculty and staff, especially for lengthy requests. Public Comment and Board Meetings, we changed the time limit to be consistent with three minutes, which we have with every, for everything else, three-minute response time. The President's Succession was reviewed and approved as written, we did not change anything. And the J.D. Ross Extraordinary Service Award was changed to support a majority vote instead of a unanimous vote.
So when do we talk about these reports? When we pull them in the back end?
When we get to first read.
Okay.
Yes.
Just asking. This is new agenda.
Item 1.8.7, Finance Committee Report.
Well, Jeff basically gave it tonight, so...
Okay.
It's where we do.
All righty. And we had the 1.8.8, Decennial Committee Report.
We had a first meeting today, successful. We had a quarrel, and have a couple more meetings possibly for the fourth one in the coming month, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
No other report.
Item 1.8.9, the President's Report, Dr. Klein-Nemo.
Chairman Wodzinski, members of the board and members of the JJC community, I was close to doing the student trustee report, trustee Ellis, but I think the correct one's coming up here in just a bit. Well, you know, per usual, we have a lot to celebrate here at the college. You know, I'll start, as this is coming up, I'll start by thanking the trustees for all of their engagement, you know, in the time that I've been here. Many trustees are at different events. In fact, just today, trustee Broderick and trustee Harris and I were at the State of the County event with KRT, which was exhilarating. It was exhilarating, and commend Jennifer Bertino-Tarrant for all the good work that she's doing. And of course, I'll have a slide on this in just a second, but the ACCT Annual Conference in Las Vegas this year was another great event. All right, so it looks like we're up here, close to it. No worries, Matt, no worries. I do want to, as this is coming up, I do want to also, first of all, thank our Laurel and Bob for acknowledging. I'm thankful that the message we sent across the college community, both for employees and for staff, has been so well-received. You know, this is indeed an island. It's indeed, the last line of my statement referenced, that we aspire, and we do indeed honor all aspects of our students' identities and take great pride in that, right? From start to finish, when they walk in the door till when they walk across the stage. And, you know, that message was an artifact of that philosophy, and I'm glad that it's brought our employees and our students some comfort. Cabinet and I made our way to Lower Level J, actually, correction, the collaborative classroom today, to honor the Peace Circle space that the Office of Student Activities created for our students to process all of that is going on in the world, and as I mentioned earlier, in our community, in our service district, just miles away. So we will continue as an executive leadership team to support spaces that allow our students to grieve, to mourn, to heal, and to have some comfort, and know that we will continue to provide those spaces and those resources for our entire community. All right, it looks like we're up and running here. I did have an opportunity to have a conversation this morning with Mayor John Argadellis, the mayor of Plainfield, who was, you know, as you can imagine, going through a lot right now, so just wanted to express that the community of Plainfield is on our minds as a college community, and Mayor Argadellis was very gracious, spent about 15 minutes on the phone with me, actually interrupted our cabinet meeting, but I was happy to do so. So just a great moment for us, and want to, again, send our thoughts out to the entire Plainfield community. I, too, would like to welcome Brian to the team here. Yes, you've got big shoes to fill, but you're filling them, you've already hit the ground running, you know, from day one, when the board voted unanimously to support you in your new role, I just want to acknowledge all that you've contributed thus far, and all you will contribute. You've been responsive, you've already given us a lot of great advice and guidance, and, you know, to the college community, KGG has a fantastic reputation in the community. Both Brian and his partners are deeply embedded in the community, involved in a lot of different ways. I won't list all of them, but if you get to know Brian, he'll talk about some of them. So welcome, Brian, and welcome, KGG. So items before the board today, see Jeff Hupes' presentation for the tax levy, that's number one. You also have on consent, and some of you may have noted this, but the Morris Education Center lease is up for renewal, and that may run contrary to all of the activity and energy and things we're doing to aggressively pursue an increased footprint in Grundy County. Know that we need a place to be until the building gets built, the place is decided, the programs are decided, so that's what's before you. And of course, lastly, in reference to Dr. Guzman's comments, before you today is a recommendation to honor the interests of our high school districts. And the numbers you see below, so essentially, the recommendation before the board is to waive tuition for our free and reduced students across our entire district. And as a reminder to the board, we have over 25 individual, independent high school districts. We have 40,000 students across our service area. The numbers that you're seeing, the 2021, 2020, 2020, 21 school year, the 7% represents the total number of free and reduced students. 21, 22, 3%, 22, 23, 5%. So it is actually a relatively small number, but again, we're interested in honoring the interests of some of our important dual-credit partners there. And truthfully, we hope that number will grow, right? More on dual credit in just a little bit, I want to acknowledge Jennifer Baines, Mark Morrissey, for helping to lead the president's leadership experience. It's an investment in our employees. I was able to address the group and talk about community college ecosystem, kind of revisit some of my research agenda from back in the day, and just commend everyone who's willing to allocate the time to invest in our employees, and not just the employees, and actually trustee Ellis is participating! I'm remembering that right now! But the individuals who have dedicated their time to present, along with me and the president's leadership experience. And so it's a multi-week process, I believe it's concluding sometime in November. Not going to steal Christie's thunder here, but I can't help but acknowledge the enormous success the Foundation 50th Anniversary was. I think it'll live in most of our memories, and I do want to formally congratulate the board. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. President was elusive that night, but that is an eight-for-eight in support of our incredible foundation celebration of his... Oh, we're going to get an applause. Eight-for-eight, trustees. Oh, I did make it in one of the pictures there, okay. Proof that I was there. We are really proud of Dr. Tracy Morris. She was recently installed and had an investiture ceremony similar to mine at IVCC. We're very proud of her. I remain connected to her on a weekly basis, and the image over to the right is, you know, the very rare double, double presidential selfie. Proud of Tracy. This was a busy day, you'll see trustee Broderick in there, you'll see trustee Harris in there. Hopefully, I'm not missing any of the other trustees, but this is a very busy day when we did the Foundation 5K in the morning and then popped over to Grundy and Morris to participate in the annual Corn Fest. So I was able to check off something on my Midwest bingo card, Corn Fest, check. And as you can see, there's a really big group out there, right? And it's by design, right? We're paying more attention to Grundy County and many of our Grundy... We're paying more attention to Grundy County, and many of our Grundy County or Morris Education Center employees actually recruited, volunteered their children to be there as well, so. Want to thank the trustees who attended my presentation, the presidential search process from four presidents who got the job. Hopefully, it was a candid, honest, transparent look at the process itself. I pride myself on being a little diplomatic in those spaces, and I looked to my right, and my colleagues weren't necessarily as diplomatic as I expected them to be, but I think in the end, the feedback was that their candor was helpful, especially to those institutions who are currently going through presidential search. And so pictured here from left to right, Derek Leslie is a trustee at Northland Pioneer College, Chattle Hazelbaker, they're all colleagues of mine that I've connected with over the years, so I was the person responsible for bringing them together. Chattle provided comic relief, trustees who were there. The president of Northland Pioneer College up in northern Arizona, Felicia Ganther, Dr. Felicia Ganther, has a law degree and a PhD, was the president of Bucks County Community College until recently. John Meduko, Dr. John Meduko, similar to Dr. Gray, is a medical doctor. He runs the statewide Connecticut Community College system, and he and I connected over social media, actually. So a great panel, I thought, but I'm biased, and again, thank the trustees who were there. I want to give, I want to, this is a teaser, okay? So as you all might recall, probably do, I charged a group of individuals, prominent people in the Grundy County area, to come up with a plan, and that plan was, charge, rather, what does an increased footprint for JJC look like out west? So we gathered some of the most prominent individuals, and you'll see them here. The group led by Dr. Farmer includes, let's see, we've got Mary Kutcher from Grundy County, she's a Grundy County administrator, we've got KRT, we've got Dr. Farmer, we've got Sharon Johnson with Constellation there, we've got Josh West, we've got Dr. Santiago, we've got Nancy Norton there, we've got Julie from the city of Morris's office, we've got Lance Copes from GAVC, all of the who's who of Grundy County, working together over the last four months to come to provide me a formal recommendation as to what an increased presence might look like, which communities and which programs, rather, we might have in this new facility and space. So the teaser to the board is this. I anticipate presenting to the board something in November that will give you something to seriously consider. Stay tuned. I want to thank Stan Pieglo. This was an opportunity for me to revisit my academic and my professional roots. I accepted an invitation to participate in the cybersecurity awareness event. I was joined by individuals from Fermilab, the CIO from Fermilab, Matt, and Brian there, who is, excuse me, Bob, who is the CIO for Sentinel Technologies, a large IT consulting and cybersecurity company. Robert Chanichy there. To my right is our Chief Information Security Officer here at JJC. So I hope we were able to provide the audience of about 50, mostly cybersecurity students, with some valuable information. If nothing else, we scared them. We made them very afraid to use their devices. All right. So I threatened the cabinet this morning that they're going to get sick of me talking about this, and this is just the beginning of our opportunity to celebrate 12 by 12 by 12. I want to take a moment to just thank the board for your support of this from start to finish, and this initiative is a year in the making. You'll recall that this board voted to reduce tuition down to $12 for all of our students in October, Amy? November? So let's just say it's been exactly a year since you've done that. You've seen me present at the ICCTA event. Well, here we are, a year later, and we absolutely have something to celebrate. Let me direct your attention to the first rectangle. So if you were to add up the last one, two, three, four, five, six, seven fall semesters, total credit hours, paid credit hours generated for the past seven years, add them up, divided by seven, you would get 11,600 credit hours. Remember that number? Because last fall, we actually set quietly a record of 13,500 credit hours, okay? So let those two numbers sit. Average 11,600 fall semester credit hour production in dual credit, right? Fall '22, 13,500. Take a look at our most recent, as of this morning's enrollment report. Now, we're up in terms of tuition credit, 3.73; in terms of community and continuing education, adult basic education, 6.19%, so an overall 6.15. And I want to direct your attention. I would have celebrated 14,000. Not a good dancer, but I would have danced at 15,000. Chairman, I have no idea what to do with myself at 16,323, which appears to be our final number. So when I initially set the vision to be a statewide leader, this is what I meant. So allow me the opportunity to continue to mic drop a little bit and thank, because while this, I can claim this vision, this is the result of a lot of effort, and I want to be sure to acknowledge all of them. You know, I'll actually start with Kelly, because she did the presentation, and I asked her not to share too much about 12 by 12 by 12. But what Kelly and her team did is provide every group, from CMOS to recruiting, to advising, to our faculty, the tools to go out there and communicate the importance of 12 by 12 by 12 to all 40,000 students and their parents, and the counselors, and all of our partner school districts. So I want to start there. I want to acknowledge in this picture Lynn Mackey, Dean Lynn Mackey, Amanda Engelhardt, excuse me, Bobby Shaggy, Missy Gillis, are you here today?
I'm in the house.
Okay. She probably suspected I'd give her huge kudos, and that is indeed what I'm doing. Missy's our manager of dual credit. Stephanie Wright, Jennifer Macharzik, and I'll hold off on Dr. Gray for just a second, because the mechanics of this, right, are very difficult. President doesn't come in and say, hey, do this and have it magically happen, right? The mechanics, the details, the intricacies of our relationships with each of these districts is not easy. Trustees heard about the teacher credential challenge when we were in Springfield. That's something to work through times 25-plus school districts, right? So in the spring, we'll be implementing, I see Tim here as well, we'll be implementing a piece of software called Dual Enroll that'll allow us to be even better, to allow us to connect all of our districts. The numbers we've achieved, mind you, and shout out again to Christie Mulvey and the foundation, but these numbers have not been impacted by the $25,000 gift from Joliet Township, have not been impacted by the half a million dollar gift from the foundation just yet, because it's too early. Both of those gifts will be applied for Fall '24. So the future is bright. Not only is the present bright for 12 by 12 by 12, but the future is also bright for 12 by 12 by 12. I want to give a shout out to VP Valdez. I want to give a shout out to Deandre in the back there, and the team in student development who have embraced this initiative and the charge to go out and communicate its importance and recruit as many students as possible into this program, knowing full well they're going to be in good hands with us. And last but not least, none of this happens, and this is Dr. Farmer's famous quote, is its leadership, both good and bad. None of this, none of this happens without the leadership, the direction, the guidance of our chief academic officer. I didn't bring the pyrotechnics, Dr. Gray, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But Dr. Gray, thank you for your leadership in this space for dual credit. So if the board would please, and the audience would please, please give a hand to everyone involved. And that number right there. And with that, Chairman, I'll yield back. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1.9, Minutes, Approval of the Minutes for the Regular Meeting Held on September 13, 2023.
Second.
Did we miss the Student Trustee Report?
No. Not yet. Best for last.
We have a different agenda.
No, one minute.
Some move.
One minute.
Second.
And hold. Did you want to discuss?
I want to make a question on this one. We identify Attorney Carl Buck led the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to know if Carl Buck was with RCK at this point in time or another firm.
From my understanding, he was still with RCK.
Then we need a letter confirming that.
Why, we don't have a letter concerning that he wasn't.
I'm asking for a letter to confirm that he's still with, he was still with RCK at this meeting.
He's still with RCK now.
Well, as our current attorney said, he's only heard it verbally. I'd like to have something in print.
We have nothing in print that says otherwise.
We're a policymaking board. May I ask how you buy this letter is in relevance to our position as trustees?
I'm asking for it from the minutes to confirm it.
For your own personal knowledge, but as a trustee, I don't know that any of us think that we need this information.
I'm not into argument. I just asked for it.
I don't, I don't think it's required, so. For what it's worth.
Yeah, I mean, you've issued requests for information. Nothing has changed on any of this. We know Carl is still with RCK. Carl represented us in the last meeting. We were never informed by RCK that he wasn't with them. So we don't request this from every single person that speaks, a letter from their employer telling us they're still employed. We have nothing that indicates.
My request was made. If you deny it, then fine. Move on.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion is already made.
Are we ready, Bud? Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.10, Approval of the Agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.11, Approval of Consent Agenda as Presented.
Some move. Second. I would like 3.1, hold, and 3.2.2, hold.
Any other items?
No.
You have a roll?
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.1, Approval to Pay Listing of Bills for the period ending September 30, 2023 as presented.
Some move.
Second.
Next question.
Discussion.
Questions on several of the bills. One is the, on page 1, for the Association of Community College Trustees, the Board Retreat with Pam Fisher, 6202.50. I don't remember the board knowing about the charge for the retreat.
Maureen, could you do me a favor and go back and mention the page number for?
I did.
One more time.
Page 1.
Okay, thank you.
Line 2, so everybody knows if that was.
Right, line 2.
Line 2.
Okay, go ahead.
The other one is, we go to page, bear with me. It's in regards to the ACCT Conference and the ICCTA fees. I address this to Karen Kissel. The fees for the attendance of these things, for the ACCT, should be for Trustee Lee, she's the ICCTA, ACCTA delegate, and the second delegate, the person that replaces her if anything happens, is Trustee Lee, and then I for the ICCTA. Those are the three that are supposed to be considered under that category for the deduction from the ACCT and ICC travel line. I ask that they be corrected and have the chair and the vice chair under their own accounts as they should be, and if there's any charges that need to be considered for reimbursement, I will talk to the chair about that. And it's also on page 45, too.
Okay, so I'm sorry, so you're saying that you don't agree that Trustee Morales or our chair Budzinski?
They don't fall under the ICCTA ACCT fund. That's Diane and you that do, and I alone, since I'm the president of the ICCTA.
So you want this to come out of the JJC travel budget? Is that what you're asking?
Theirs needs to come out of their budget. Ours comes out so that it's corrected, that our three shows that it comes out of the correct budget.
Out of the ACCTA budget and not out of the JJC budget.
Correct. Do you have something in writing on that? Pardon me? Do you have something in writing on that? That's how it's always been.
I'll check the policies as well.
All right, thank you. It's always been that. It was looked at as the vice chair and the president, or the chair and the vice chair before, because I was the vice for six years, but the ICCTA rep. It had nothing to do with the vice chair position. It had with the fact that I was the rep. Dan and Bob were the alternates. That's why it came out with as the chair, but it's supposed to be the designated person and the alternative delegate and anything related to the people that are ICCTA. That's why the letter came from the president or the chair. When I elected to do the ICCTA presidential thing or be nominated for that, that's why those things were put that way. And I'm just asking for a question.
So you're for the, but you are the president of the ICCTA, not the ACCTA, so why is it that your funds would come out of the ACCTA budget, but you are not the rep or the?
It's all one budget, just so you know. It's all one budget. That's why I said ICCTA, ACCT.
But what she's saying is for this particular event, the ACCT, yours should come out of your budget, not the ACCT budget. So the only two that should be part of the ACCT budget is you two.
Is us, right. Okay.
But anything ICCTA is the three of us, but it comes out of that same account. If you look at the accounts in the back, that's what I mean.
So with the ACCT, though, it's the same thing. The ACCT is the same thing, then. The only people that should get money out of the ICCTA budget would be the rep, no, the rep and the alternate.
Not the president.
The president.
No, the president. That's your choice to do that. That's not the college's choice to have you on there. So it should be just those two.
No, 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 no. The letter came from the chair. Each time I ran for an office, it said it would be offset by that. Karen has the letter that shows that. So yes, it is off of that, because I have to go to all of those conferences as the ICCTA president.
You don't have. You don't have to, you chose to do this.
No.
You are not representing the college in that place. This is a Maureen thing, this is not a JJC thing that you're doing.
When you look at all the information, it says ICCT A, JJC. So please look at that and understand that it's for both.
Karen, do you have that letter then?
I, no, I don't have that letter. But just for clarification, there is two different accounts, there's an ACCT account, which has always been the chair and the vice chair that covers their expense. And then the ICCT A has always been the rep. And this year we have an alternate, so we allowed for that as well, and we did allow, as the president, some funds to go to that as well. But in everything that I've looked at or I've heard and talked to, ACCT, the chair and vice chairs' expenses have always come out of that ACCT budget line.
That's only because I was the rep and the chair was the delegate. It's not supposed to be for them, they are supposed to use their own account. There is nothing that demands them to be at the ACT with the ACT funds.
I do have a recommendation. Let's go ahead and hold off and let's actually look at the procedure and the policies.
I agree.
Because we can continue to talk, but that's not going to help us at any point.
So we have to approve the bill, we just have to move bucket to bucket?
Correct.
Correct, we, the bucket can be, we could move the bucket if need be.
We're ready for a vote. Are we ready for a vote?
This is all one item, all the listing of bills, so now we're moving to?
We do need to.
No, we still have to vote on 3.1.
We're voting on each one individually?
Yeah, the ones that are polled.
But this line item is the posting of the bills.
It's a 3.1, right?
3.1, we do have a motion and a second. We just need a roll call, so we're voting on 3.1.
Correct.
Okay. Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
I'm staying.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis? Yes. Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
They called Morales twice. Motion carries.
Item 3.2, business services, 3.2.1, the bid for the new four-by-four diesel pickup truck, we bid.
I think it's 3.2.2. She pulled 3.2.2.
3.2.2. Consortium pre-employment screenings.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion.
The concern I had when I was looking at it, it said it identified Workday, can someone explain, is fully integrated with Workday, what the necessary, what, what goes on with that? As far as it's integrated with Workday?
Yep, sure, Chairman, trustee Bradrick, thank you for your question, I think I'd like to invite either Aileen or Judy to take this one to talk about the integration specifically. It's a great ERP word, by the way. A lot of meaning behind it.
Hi, yes, when we procured accurate background check in 2020 was with the idea that we would want something that would fully integrate with Workday. So it is a very seamless process from both our side, the college's side and the applicant's side. They're notified and provided with the information where they need to go and get their drug test and their pre-employment physical. And we're not restricted to just one local provider here, they can go in their hometown. This network works with people whether they live out of state or just even not locally. So everything's done through Workday, the recruiter says move to background check and then it automatically takes the information already submitted by the applicant and puts it through Accurate to run their background check, notify them of their physical, track the number of days they've taken to submit their drug tests, so it's seamless. Under our previous system, it was a standalone.
It wasn't.
Something we had to log into to go and fire off the notification to the employees.
So you don't have to do that anymore then, right, with this, the system?
Right, and it comes back to us electronically, we can go in and get more detailed information from the system if needed, but yes, it's integrated, yeah.
Are we ready to vote?
We're ready to vote.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis? Yes. Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that was it on your 3.2s?
I only have the 3.2.
Okay, well, you checked my book.
I know, I'm sorry, I checked wrong.
Okay, so, all right. Item 5.1, first reading of board policies.
Is this where we can talk about it then?
Yes.
Okay, my question is this, I'm noticing that when you have the line items, and I'm looking at what the old one was, it doesn't draw all of the spouse, domestic partner, children, stepchildren, partner, siblings, step siblings, all the list of whatever. Is that what you're adding to it then, to define it?
No, so family is defined in our employee handbook and therefore we shortened it by just stating family. And if you need to further, go and look in our employee handbook.
Okay, but when you line item did in, what I'm looking at what the one was in the book. And I'm looking at this, it says family member of trustee, and then I'm looking family member, and it's got all of this spelled out. So are we keep, because?
Trustee Lee, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, please.
We had Brian review all of the policies and his recommendation was to detail out what family means. As an institution, we have a definition of family, what that means in our employee handbook. And we had made them consistent with the employee handbook, with the definition of family is, so we've added that into this policy.
But don't you think, and I'm going to ask this because when you're looking at anything that's convoluted for hiring purposes, you look at who's in the immediate household. Anyone that lives in a different address, that's not engaged with you, living in the household, this puts a long extension of family in there. Is there not a way of shortening it to those that live in the household versus nephews, aunts, uncles who are by themselves and not in the same household?
So the recommendation is to make sure that we're consistent with the language that we have in our employee handbook. Again, there's different relationships that even if they're not in the same household, we want to be cautious and mindful that we can still have a conflict of interest even if they're not within the same household.
But doesn't that show kind of a conflict of interest though, with, I mean, the fact that you're now saying, like, and I'm going to use this as, I'll use my own example, my son lives in a separate house with his wife and his family. Because I apply and he works there, is that considered a conflict of interest? Because he has nothing to do with my income or anything to do with my job situation, that he's an employee?
If there's any relationship that can benefit and there's any transaction that can happen, it might result in a, in a conflict of interest. Not always, but there's specific circumstances.
In the language, right?
Exactly, outline here, specifically letting you know if this happens, then it could potentially lead to this. And again, we're trying to be really mindful to make sure that we are being clear and making sure that we're able to communicate in case there's something that comes up so that we, the board, is aware. Does that make sense?
Well then, I guess my question, and Brian, you wouldn't know this, but, okay, we had a student trustee whose mom worked here, but he voted, would that be then considered in this verbiage?
It depends if the vote that the student trustee is taking is going to benefit.
The student trustee's votes are, and no offense, trustee Ellis, obviously, they don't really count.
No, I'm using it as an example, I'm using it as an example. I'm using it as an example, so that if someone, you know, has a relationship that is on, that works here.
But he's a student trustee.
No, no, so what she's, let me give you an example, if one of us has another family member who's an aunt, uncle, cousin or something that works for Dr. Bob Marsink or is part of a union contract, that person should not be voting on the new union contract, that's a conflict of interest, and that's what she's looking at.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
This gives us a long list, but still, to what trustee Garcia-Guian said, I could still affect that distant relative by my approval of a contract, so that's why that's in there the way it is. So we want to include all the family just to cover us for all conflict of interest.
I was just asking for the extension of all family.
The prior policy didn't define family, and that would have led to a lot of issues and questions, so we tried to
Correct.
put in a definition here of what's included, so nobody can claim surprise.
Yes.
When we're looking at it, when we're defining the family, where are we going to get the definition of the family?
From the, from the policies that are already in existence.
That are already in place, that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're keeping it consistent.
Okay, that's all I'm asking, thank you.
Any other items?
Any other board policies you want to discuss?
Board request for information?
Item 5.1.3.
Yes.
Yes, 5.1.3. Question I have is, I had brought this up, that when we request stuff, it still says in here that we, no copies shall be provided or whatever. If it's already, and I have the example of getting a contract that was already, that I went through and FOIA'd, it was not redacted at all, but yet I would have had to come in and read it here. There should be some language that says if it's already a public document, that we should be able to have it emailed to us or be able to pick it up or whatever. I don't think we should be subjected to not being able to come in, I mean, to be, to be subjected to come in and not see it unless we come in.
We are a policymaking board, there are very few documents that we should be requesting or need emailed or taken home to us for, and, and most of it does have sensitive information. So the way that the policy is worded is to protect the students, employees, faculty and staff that work here and.
But if it's a public document already, it's not pertaining.
Then FOIA request it, then you have the option in the policy to FOIA request that, that information if you really feel that you need it. That is the process.
Why would a trustee have to go through the laborious task of FOIAing it when we should be able to just ask?
Because if it is not a part of our job as a policymaking committee.
That's what I'm saying.
Then why would you go through here to get it, if it's already a public document, there's an alternative source for it.
That's using your authority as a trustee to get information that you should be getting a different way. If it does not pertain to our position on this board as a policymaking committee or with any of the committees that we are on, then therefore we should not need access to that information, and if you are personally requesting access to information, it needs to be on the college to protect the students, faculty and staff, and if it is a public document, then FOIA request it.
Next one I have is the J.D. Ross extraordinary, 5.1.6. Now, I know that you guys aren't familiar with this J.D. Ross extraordinary award. The ESA was the award prior to J.D. Ross's being, being named to this award. When it was the ESA award, and I know Kristy Malvi can help me on this, before that, there was candidates, up to three candidates, that could be able to obtain the ESA award. When it was changed after J.D. Ross left and it was named for him, it was specifically only for one candidate. That's what I was told, it was for one candidate, only one. And that the committee would bring three, would bring the three people to, the three highest candidates to the board for the board to decide. And I mean, even the past chairman, Wonderlick, said that that's what happened with it. When did it change, because it was always supposed to be, he said, one winner?
Per the policy, it hasn't, we did not change that language, and I have been on here for two years and I was on the J.D. Ross committee. From the moment that I was on the J.D. Ross committee, last year when I started, it was in the policy and explained to me that you can change, that you can pick up to two people to win and that they both can make it to the end and win. And somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I was told that there were two winners previously to me being on this board, since you've been on this board.
One time, one time.
One time, but you know about that though.
I know about that.
Okay, so you're asking a question about something that you know about, that there was an exception, but you were okay with that exception then, but now you're asking this question why?
They asked the board and the board made the decision to do two at that time. We've also had it where there's been none because of the fact that the qualities weren't there. But my understanding, and Kelly, you can, because aren't you the head of the committee? Doesn't it say on there that one is selected?
And we have a combination, so we're looking at the board policy right now. Connected to this, there's also procedures. Procedures break it down a lot more, but it's two winners, up to two. People who we are nominating, and again, the selection committee is made up of numerous people that are looking at all the qualities that someone from the community might have in order for us to actually be able to determine their level of involvement in the community. The different categories that we focus on, humanitarian service, distinguished public service. And again, all of this you already know, but I'm providing additional information to remember, scholarly work and creative attainment. So all of those categories, and I have been part of the selection committee for the last few years. We have been able to look at all of those different components, and it's always difficult to narrow it down because there's a lot of community members that are part of our nominees that have, that have Excel. So it's two.
You did an extraordinary job, it's all accurate, and I, I do want to confirm, it's never been three, it's always been up to two. I've been involved in facilitating this process for almost 12 years and it's, it's been that, the policy has been the same.
Well, this is, this has been for 17 years, and my understanding was the ESA, you could have up to three, the ESA.
No.
The ESA award, which was prior to J.D., prior to J.D., the ESA award.
Well, I think the topic on the table is the J.D. Ross extraordinary service award as it exists now, and I can confirm that it's up to two.
Well, in this, you say the recipient, the award recipient, which is singular. So, but my understanding is it's always been supposed to be one, when Andy Mahalik did all of the background, and you guys are not of the tenure, but when Andy Mahalik would do it, he'd bring the three candidates to us, because he was on that committee, and say, I need you to look at who's the one that we will support. And it was the board's decision because the board's the one who is the one, we are the ones responsible for the president's position. So the president's award here for J.D. Ross should still be left with the, the board to make that decision. And I, it wasn't any derailing of any sort, it was what we were used to when I came on the board and what the prior board members had said of the past history of what was going on with this award.
Well, I'm sorry, that's what the prior board members said, but what's in writing and what's in our policy is, and thank you for, you know, letting us notice that the S should have been on the end of recipients in parentheses. And if you take a look at the procedure, you will see where it gets in more detail, where, you know, that is where a policymaking board, not a procedure-making board, but as Kelly has stated since the last 12 years that she's been on that committee, it has been up to two recipients, which you stated you are aware of because you have been on this board where two recipients have won before.
One time, it made an exception, I'm making that as a note, it was one-time exception because they were extraordinary. It's not because we had the need to put two in, it was always supposed to be just one. And my understanding was on the form, it said one candidate would be chosen, and it was three that would come from the committee to the board because that is the board's job then to choose and approve.
Well, the reason that we actually, you know, with all the other awards that we receive, we wanted to be consistent. So one of the things that we did change is that it would be a majority vote by the board and that it would be brought to the board with the committee basically, who spends all that time and hard work choosing and going through those applicants and meeting at the meetings and, and their time and energy that goes into that, you know, to be brought to the board. And for, you know, when it's, when it's just a, when it's a unanimous vote instead of a majority, one board member, that gives that one board member a whole lot of power to deny somebody in our community who the rest of the board feels deserves that award. That gives that one board member a lot of power, so we decided in the policy committee, which is before you today, is the rest, that, you know, it would be best if we did a majority vote or if the committee just simply brought it to the board to let us know their decision. We as board members, obviously, you know, we do, there are two board members that do sit on that committee that do get to help make that choice. Again, we are a policymaking committee, so the fact that we are even, you know, a part of this is amazing and I'm very, very happy to be able to have been a part of that, and, you know, to Diane, you are a part of it this year, I believe, so congratulations. It's a huge responsibility and amazing thing to be able to be a part of.
I just look at the culture and the history that we've had, and I hate to see tradition and culture changed because we want to change it just because you knew, the newer situation is that you want to do it this way. It's always been, as a board member, as a senior board member, I've never resented any of the board members prior that came. prior that came and said, this is what we did. I respected that. I wish that respect was here, and we carry tradition and culture on, because I feel we should be doing that.
I support the new changes, and I'm glad we can vote for up to two people.
And sometimes you have to change. We cannot stay the same and expect different results. So, as a committee, Board Policy Committee, this is the changes that we are sharing with you all. And they're going to come up for the second reading, for next meeting. Thank you.
And then, one more, Jim?
Yes.
The committees of the board. I had given trustee assignments, and I see it says, there should be some format, because the trustees were always asked what committees they'd like to be on. I'd like to incorporate this form to be added, which gives, which will be going to the trustees, so that the trustees can at least have their input onto what they'd like, because they've always had that, where they've been asked by the chair, please give me, by the board secretary, to get, to got it, via the board chair requesting it, that each of the trustees say which committee they'd like to be on, so that they can see the interest of it.
I disagree. That has never been shown to me before, in the three years I've been here, I've never seen that before. You keep talking about protocol in the past. It's not in the policies, which is what governs us, governs us.
To be fair, we were always asked to, to select two or, two or three committees to be on. I know that's what happened in the past when I went on the board.
It hasn't happened since I've been here.
I was gonna say, since Jim and I have been on the board, we were assigned our committees.
I wasn't asked either.
They used to ask that, so...
And as a reminder, the policy is the broad description. So, this is not going to tell us every single thing that is going to happen, at all.
Right.
So, the policy is just outlining the main responsibilities, and how we make it happen, that's part of additional conversation. So, that will not be listed here in the policy as a reminder.
Thank you.
And I think we all have been asked, I hate to tell you, because we, we had to write down our top three committees.
That was what it was supposed to be.
I know, it's not a policy, I know, but in the past, we all had to write down our top three, and we gave that to the chair.
But that's a history that we have had, Jake, that we experienced with the board chairs that did it that way. Which was fair, which was fair.
Alicia, I know you were on the board at the same time, we all had to write down our top three, and give it to the board chairman at that time, so...
I didn't write anything down, I was just assigned, but that's okay.
I was always assigned, so...
I know, I was just saying, in the past, it has done that, so, but, but I'm open, the policy looks great to me, I'm not worried about it. I'm just, so, I appreciate all the work the policy team does, so too.
Thank you.
You guys are the third best committee.
Chairman, before we move on, I just wanted to express an interest of the administration, and just commend the policy committee for, this work's not easy. You know, I know that, so just commend the trustees involved, trustee Lee and trustee Garcia again, so thank you. In policy one point three six, board request for information. I think maybe one of the things I've struggled with is, and I'm glad that it's still in here, and I would encourage the board to, to maintain this in the wording. The first paragraph, of course, that starts with, "In making decisions in the best interest of", I want to direct your attention to the very last line. I think that is, for me, one of the most important lines in the policy. Such access should clearly be related to the board decision-making process. And I completely respect trustee Broderick's position in regards to FOIA and what's FOI-able. I would also offer that maybe, you know, there are some things that are FOI-able at the college that are not necessarily related to, to board decision. Not that I've, not that I've seen that in my time here, but I thought through when you offered that, trustee Broderick, because I thought it was a really good point. There are just some things that anyone could FOIA that are not necessarily related to board decision-making. So, I value this line specifically.
Motion to approve the...
Well, we're not approving anything here, we're just first reads, just discussion, thank you. Item six point one, student trustee report. Pre-applause, trustee Ellis, pre-applause.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm excited to share with you some of the incredible accomplishments of our student clubs and organizations, both on and off campus. I'd like to express my appreciation for the outstanding support that our students have shown for each other throughout this semester. It is truly impressive and heartwarming to see such strong solidarity among our student body. Student government. We have been working on building stronger relationships between our student body, faculty, staff, and administration. This semester, we have formed several new committees based on the interest of our students, such as food insecurities, civic engagement, advocacy, and service. With the aim to encourage civic engagement, we have already hosted Constitution Day, where we registered students to vote and provided voter education. In addition, we will be hosting a club-wide dodgeball tournament on Tuesday, November 14th, from 11:30 to 1:00 P.M., to promote community building and fun, fun among our students. Did you all know that we have over 100 acres of corn and soybeans? Well, our Student Ag Association just finished up harvesting at our land laboratory. They've conducted experiments with different seed variety hybrids, tillage practices, and applications. The results are then compared at the end of the season for yield, moisture, and quality. Additionally, they are currently preparing for the upcoming Professional Agriculture Students Organization, P.A.S., event, where they will represent J.J.C. and take part in a competition. It is worth noting that Keely Wickstead, a J.J.C. student, is currently serving as the P.A.S. president. Our anime and manga club will be bringing students together on Thursday, October 19th, at the H Center Bridge, to discuss manga and other topics related to the medium. They are also planning a field trip next month to Mitsua Marketplace, which, which is an authentic Japanese-inspired market in Arlington Heights. I have the privilege of witnessing our wonderful Fine Arts Department, and students come together for the play Antigone. They, the play examined civil disobedience, morality, loyalty, authority, human laws, and gender differences, and everyone did an amazing job. Wolf Pack Productions is a digital media club at J.J.C. that specializes in creating video projects, photography, and graphic designs for other clubs. They have already completed several projects this semester and have many more in store. They are responsible for the images in this slide, and currently, they are gearing up for the Four Points Movie Competition, which is a four-day movie-making competition. The team's excited about it and eagerly looking forward to the upcoming projects. They also have launched a podcast, with the aim of interviewing other club leaders to learn more about their experiences and future goals. Our NSLS chapter is growing at a rapid rate. We kicked off this month with orientations and leadership training days at our main campus, Romeoville and City Center. Students have identified their SMART goals, and have been put in success networking teams with students with similar areas of study, to serve as a support system and accountability partner. And each year, Phi Theta Kappa does a college and honors in action project. This year, our Phi Theta Kappa chapter chose to install an Illinois Native Pollinator Garden on campus, which is located on the Horticulture Lot. They installed the garden so that it could be used for teaching material and for the identification of Illinois natives. Conference Zone Tuesdays have returned. The Office of Student Activities have resumed this event, which offers a safe environment for students to do their homework, play games, and enjoy live music from fellow students. Moreover, this event provides students free soup, tea, and coffee, which is proven to be beneficial to students who come in to take night classes. Cyber Wolves, in case you are not aware, the month of October is Cyber Security Month. Our student club, the J.J.C. Cyber Wolves, launched an open forum event yesterday, October 17th, and the topics of this forum fell into categories including mobile device management, browser security, social engineering, phishing, and Al tools. Alongside Dr. Namua, their club is thrilled to host a panel of experts, including representatives from Sentinel Technologies, Fermilab, and J.J.C.'s Department of Security. Did you know that October is also Disability Awareness Month? Our Disability Awareness Club will be hosting Disability Awareness Day on Monday, on Wednesday, October 25th, from 10:00 to 1:00 P.M. at Lower Level J. They strive to educate and promote disability awareness at J.J.C. through numerous interactive activities, as well as an informative and diverse panel. They asked me to share with you all that I'm welcome, and they look forward to seeing you all there. This past week, I had the privilege of attending ACCT Leadership Congress in Las Vegas. There, I attended the Student Trustee Advisory Committee meeting, where I and other student trustees discussed the significance and importance of community college. I want to add that throughout our discussion, I was able to reflect on J.J.C.'s affordability, values, strong community partnerships, engagement, and our grassroots stories. Our overall identity as a college, I was really able to pick up and identify why J.J.C. is the first choice for learning, working, and cultivating pathways to prosperity. Thank you all for your time.
May I make one quick comment?
Yes.
I saw Josh Stamvorsky citing him at Wolf Pack Productions. I don't know if you saw that one, so he was in the background.
He did.
Can I provide another comment?
Yes, say it.
Thank you so much for the wonderful presentation. You all were really busy the last few weeks, so thank you all. Wonderful pictures, and I look forward to coming out in the next few weeks to support anything that you all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Yes, what, what is the manga group?
Our anime and manga club, so basically, it was a club that was started last year, but they watch anime, they have movie hostings that they do, but anyone who's interested in anime and manga, they all come together and watch and create things.
It's Japanese cartoon art, and it's like cartoons, basically, but it's Japanese art.
I think what she's asking is she wants a cartoon at the next board meeting to show us what it is.
Thank you.
Item six point three, representative, oh, no, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Six point two, representative to the J.J.C. Foundation. I even saw you got up, and I still skipped you.
When you've been here for 23 years, sometimes when you sit for three hours, you can't feel your knees. Feeling my age tonight, okay? Good evening. I, I'm gonna have to send you a different report, because I, I only did the money now, the important stuff, because we've been here a long time, so I'll give you a different report. I'm just gonna talk about a few highlights really quick. Thank you so much for those that attended the 5K. We had a successful Foundation 5K again this year. We had 333 participants, so we're really happy about that. As you know, Dr. Namua talked about our 50th anniversary endowment. I guess the biggest highlight for me, there's two. One is that we brought in $60,000 for an additional scholarship for our students in celebration of that 50 years, and so we're really excited about that. And the second is that I work with people like the Fine Arts Department that gave me 140 students and faculty members that volunteered to be there for nothing. I couldn't pay them, I did feed them, and we gave them beverages, but 140 of them committed to me the semester before that this would be on the syllabus, they would participate. And I think that, that we were able to highlight a very significant department, and I think it just really brought the whole event to a higher level. So, I want to publicly thank our Fine Arts Department and my staff for all that they did for that. It was kind of one of my crazy ideas, that we were gonna have this big thing at the Rialto, and they made it all happen, and I was very excited about that. Probably the most important thing right now is that scholarships are open and ready to be applied for, for our spring semester already. In the past, we've only usually had about 50 or 60 compared to our 450 for fall. But we've brought in a lot of new scholarship, 11 new endowments, and several annual scholarships, so we have over 100 scholarships right now, in addition to some of the grants that are supporting students for our spring semester, so we're really proud of that. And then, last but not least, we were recently notified that we will be receiving a request from the estate of Gerald Davidson for $80,000 that will go to a scholarship for the foundation for our students. So, we're happy to announce that amount, that's a significant amount from an estate. And then, our next Foundation Board meeting will be our annual meeting, which will be Wednesday, November 18th at 7:30. Unless you have any questions, that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristy, congratulations on the 50th anniversary, that was very nice.
Six point three, representative to the ICCTA, ACCT, Ms. Michelle Lee, Diane Harris.
We have a meeting?
We have a meeting for the ICCTA, November 10th, and then, I'm gonna get straight into the ACCT, so everyone can give their reports. I attended the, I'm just gonna give you my favorite one, so we're not here all night. I was a voting delegate, it was a great experience. A lot of those meetings, we're going through policy and procedure and those type of things of how the meetings were gonna be set out, so I won't bore you with too many facts of that. But the two most important, first, let me say ACCT, for anyone who does not know, is America's Community College Trustee Association. And it's a lot like the ICCTA, only all of the colleges throughout all of the states in our nation come and they get together, and we network, and we communicate, and we tell each other what's going on at your, we exchange, you know, what's going on at your college, what's going on at my college. There are differences in every state, because not every state has elected trustees, as Illinois does, some are appointed and things like that. So, you really just learn so much about the other states. I really appreciate, and I just want to say thank you to our college for supporting us in going to the ACCT, as well as the ICCTA conferences. Some of the colleges, I have noticed and I've heard throughout these events, that some of the colleges do not support their trustees in going, and I really appreciate that you do. I not only learn a lot from the actual conferences, but I also find that the actual networking with the other colleges from other states is priceless and learning as well. So, the two, the two sessions that I went to, that I was the most excited about, was Madison College's African Initiative, and they are starting a foreign exchange program with Africa, which is just amazing to me, they have done so much work. I believe they said that J.J.C. was over there, were you, was it you, or, no, but you know about it, don't you? So, J.J.C. actually had representatives in Africa, when Madison College had representatives in Africa, when they were going out there, and they didn't know, I don't think the colleges, like, knew that they were gonna meet there, but it was just really amazing to see where, J.J.C. even represented in Africa, but when another college didn't know we were gonna be there, it was really, really great, I was so excited. So, I have been interested in a foreign exchange program. I think that one of the things that, we talk about enrollment all the time, and I know that it's hard to fund something like that, especially at a junior college, but when you talk about the opportunities that that could afford some of the American students to, and not just for other countries to come here, but for us to go to other countries so we can experience what they live like, and the things that they go through, and kind of broaden our horizons. I think that that may help us gain interest in enrollment personally. I think that if I could have had that experience at a junior college, I'd have been signing up. So, maybe foreign exchange program is something we can look into, just saying. The other session that I went to, that I was super excited about, was the under 45, 45 and under for trustees. So, there are not very many of us, but it was actually so encouraging, the whole room was full. Whether it was student trustees that came, or there are just a lot more people that are a little bit younger, we literally had a full room, I want to say there was at least 25 to 30 people in that room. So, we are starting a 45 and under for the ACCT as a committee and a caucus, and we are really excited about that, just so that, kind of, you know, what was touched on here tonight is that times and, and things are changing, and sometimes that younger generation needs a voice, and some of the things that were expressed by some of the 45 and younger, which was discouraging to me, because I did not have that experience here, was that they did not feel helped, they did not feel any guidance, they actually felt ostracized, and like, people did not want them to be there. So, just thank you again to my college and everyone who has given me guidance and support in being a trustee.
And Diane?
Miss Harris.
My turn. Okay, I echo trustee Lee. I appreciate the colleges affording us the opportunity to attend. Now, I have a list, and I'm gonna go through it as quickly as possible, because I enjoyed all of them.
We do have a five minute.
You have a list, she has a clock.
Yes, per policy.
Okay, that'll work, I should be able to get through this in five minutes. But the first one I attended was building a strong partnership through board assessment at any value.[611.38][611.38](LAUGHTER).
That's a time second.
Yeah, that one really good question. Okay, and that one was presented by the Harper College, and what they were focusing on was direction and time management, which I thought was really good. They were focusing on making sure that the board is, that the board's evaluations are clear and capturing the path, which helps us to understand where the college is heading in the future. That was somewhat of the direction. And the time management was knowing what we're going to discuss, and that we only have one, that we only have one employee, and that is our president, and to work closely with him and the board, and the chair of the board, so that we can help to streamline the meeting times. I think everybody can appreciate that, yeah. Now, and that was presented by the Harper College. And then the next one I attended was called Supporting the Student Parents and the Multi-Generational Impact It Has. This was presented by the Parkland College. Their focus was connecting the resources for the students and going beyond the Title Their focus was to make sure that they're not just meeting the mandate, that they're going beyond for the students so that they feel inclusive. And some of the examples that they had were, when they had to take time off from school or to deliver, you know, because we're speaking of student parents, they have to deliver that whatever grade point that they had when they left, that they would, when they came back, they would pick up where they left off. And they said that that was instrumental in helping them move forward as opposed to starting all over again. And, let's see, okay, and then augmenting, augmented reality, how one community college is using AR technology to reach more students and increase success. That was from Finger Lake, New York College, and their focus was on, this was regarding manufacturing, and the ability to help the students to see their mistakes before they happen through real-life visual and other sensory stimuli through technology. That was very, very controversial, because they said that before they included it in their strategic plan, they had to make sure that they had outside partners, because this is a great opportunity, but it also improves, but it also replaces. So that's, that's why the competitive, but I thought that was very interesting, that it would definitely help the students to see their mistakes before they happen, which helps them to be more positive in their decision-making, so.
If you can finish that, finish that thought, go ahead, finish the thought.
I was done with the thought, but I have one more. Can I do the one more?
Real quick.
Okay, all right, real quick, because this one is very important. This one was about sustaining a long-term CEO, building trust, relationships, accountability for a substantial, long-term presidential success. And this was Lake Washington. Their focus was to make sure that college board trustees are always respectful, and if we want to keep a great president, we have to, this is what they said, eliminate drama on the board. This is what they said. I was glad to be in that one. And refrain from political activities, and that the president should be compensated, especially in his second year. And it says, "All this leads to," now, this was from Lake Washington, Lake Washington, but it also said it leads to a, to a successful culture and a transparency for a longtime president. So I thought that was very interesting.
You know, I thought we compensated very well to start.[918.82][918.82](LAUGHTER).
And then there was one other thing that I thought was interesting.
Do we need to set the clock again?
No, I'm done after this.
Chairman, Trustee Harris is making some great points.[932.25][932.25](LAUGHTER).
That it was so many colleges. Now, you know, I know it was, like you said, American, it was all of the states, but there were so many that were in the process of seeking a new president.
So let's not run ours off.
So, and that, that's why I thought this was, was very interesting, you know, because it was trying to help the board trustees know what to, right, right, what to identify. So that's it, but I, you know, I still have more, but I want you to know, I did have a good time.
Was there more on the presidential conversation too?
Yes.[972.75][972.75](LAUGHTER).
Had a good time, and again, I'm very appreciative to be able to attend.
Thank you.
Trustee Broderick.
Okay, first, I'm not gonna give my report yet. I want to give these to Michelle, these are the legislative government releases that she can pass out to all of you that I did get, so that all of you can have it. And the ICCTA meeting, just so you guys know, the big seminar is about enterprise resource planning, what trustees need to know when they're looking at ERPs, and what we need to be aware of, and all of the vendors are coming to it, and we have a CIO and presidents, we have a good background of people coming, so that the trustees, as well as anyone that wants to come, can learn what we are able to ask and talk about. Also, the, we're having a governor's leadership, November 30th and December 1st in Bloomington, so if any of the trustees want to go to that, it's November 30th and December 1st, so that anybody can get training on being a trustee. And then, don't forget the National Summit, which is February 4th and 7th. And I will get with my report then. And being that it was four days, but three days of intense seeing everything, the first thing that Diane and I both went to was the-
Hold on, one second. Reset the clock for her. It's two different items, we don't want to cut her report for the convention short.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we say two or three?
What's that?
Two or three minutes.
What did you have for them? Just whatever, just go back to the three minutes, I don't want to-
Okay, go.
Yeah, because her report's starting now, thank you.
All right, the college, we were able to take the college tour, the College of Southern Nevada, Las Vegas. They work on three things, achievement, succession, and prospering. And I sent that to Kelly, so she'd see, because that was all over the school. They partner with the City of Henderson and Private Industries, focusing on providing training and professional certifications in advanced manufacturing, career pathways. City of Henderson funded 11.5 million to construct a 16,000-square-foot building in their Phase 1 of Center of Excellence. It was really a great thing to watch, because their center is a part of direct implementation strategy to train a workforce that diversifies the region's economy and sources of sustainable growth, poker, roulette, bartending, all types of gambling, culinary. They had a whole room that was nothing but all of a game room. The logistics and operations, due to this, what they did, it increased 67.2, the health and medical increased 47 percent, student jobs for technology have increased 57.2, and dual-credit academics, they showed three types of courses that you could do. And I will share that with Dr. Namuo, because it was more detailed on that. So that was that one. And then, I did go to the ACCT Board of Directors Meeting. I've been asked to submit my application to be on an ACCT committee, so that we have JJC's representation in that. And one of the ones, meetings that I went to was Effective Board Governance, where we are entrusted with the well-being of all of our students. Veteran trustees and chairs should police the trustees, not have the president do it, because that's the worst. Agenda items ahead of meetings, don't get into the weeds. Board should present format and unified message to the president through the goals and priorities of the following year. The next one was build a strong partnership through board access and evaluation. We should have board self-evaluation every year, and it should be tied to the strategic plan and the president's evaluation. We need to develop strategic goals for the board, need progress on each of the goals and how we meet each of the goals. Build team and cohesiveness implementation on those goals. Then why hold a board retreat, which I thought this one was dynamic. They build a team, it must be annual, all retreats should work with a positive mode. Conflict resolution will happen due to differing personalities, but the facilitator is the one that must keep it always in a constructive building mode, and there should be no canceling of meetings when it's scheduled, so we should keep moving if we have a quorum. Then advance basic needs, continuous discussion, collaboration, innovation. Programs developed to meet the basic problems of the students and securities to obtain through education. It dealt with legal, housing, daycare, food, and mental health. They want to specialize, they want to have this spread through all the states. And it was interesting, the paperwork that we got on it, which they want us to bring to our legislators, and I will pass this off to Dr. Namuo, is to build this through all 50 states, so that there are grants set up for all of these needs, because they're finding that the students don't have it, and the only way they're going, they need a foundation to help them for career success, and that's what their goal was. And I have three other sessions that I went to, but I will say this, I went, I'll just mention what it is, the reimaging of the nurse pathways to propel upward mobility for the Black, Indigenous, and people of color, and the first-generation learners, which was extremely important because of the shortage of nursing and the need to get them involved in the system, and what they were supporting to do. And then, we, I went through the, we did the courtesy of going to the presidential search for Dr. Namuo, so we did show up for that, which was very good. And then, we had the ACCT Central Region Caucus and Meeting, and what was nice about that is our current, our new chair will be from Iowa, and our DEI, Tori Newsom, will be from College of Lake County, and then we have another central committee, for Central Committee Representative is Carla Hedke. So our central region maintains strength, is what we needed, and it was great seeing the support, and I'm sure Michelle will acknowledge that, that it was great to see central region support. And the last one that I went to was the Challenge of Dual Credit, using dual enrollment, which was really good, and you could see that we were far exceeding the program there, but it was good to listen to, because with that, they did increase their enrollment by 28%.
Thank you.
I will say Illinois had an overwhelming amount of people, colleges, to represent Illinois in general at the, which was encouraging to see. And I would also like to say about the committees for the ACCTA, they explained to us that there was an application in the back of our books when we went to vote as the voting delegates, so I'm just thinking that that probably, I mean, maybe because, you know, you're there, but when I was there voting, they explained to us that the application to become on one of those committees was actually in the back of our books.
It's in the back of all, everybody's books, anybody can do it, just so you know. But I was asked by the chair, Jay, to put my name in, because he wanted to see, because I was active in getting Amanda Howland reelected, because there was five people running for the director-at-large, and we were at the door, passing out everything and telling our people, which I know Michelle did too, was to bullet vote, and we got her in, because we only had one voting session, which we've had sometimes six or seven, so it didn't get crazy or hairy. She got in, the first three got in, and we were covered with the central region. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't a part of the bullet voting or any of those conversations, by the way. You asked me to do that, but you did not include me with the rest of the group to-
So I thought I had.
No. And I don't bullet vote based on what people tell me to do.
Thank you.
Trustee Ellis.
So I attended a lot of sessions at the conference, but I like to focus on one particularly. I learned a lot about DEI work, and I want to say, first off, I'm very thankful that diversity, equity, and inclusion is something that is embedded in our values here, it's in our strategic plan, it's really something that this college values. It's important to me, so thank you so much. I learned a lot about DEI banning in states that have been affected by it, and I would say one of my biggest takeaways is the importance of encouraging my peers and community to be informed voters and to actually exercise your right to vote, whether it be for the state or locally, it's very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my attendance at this was kind of interesting. When I looked at the book, there's 10 to 15 sessions per hour that you can choose from, so I was stuck between looking for what's best to develop me, what I can use best to help the college and further what we have here, and I thought it was important, and some of them, learning what some of the other colleges have done, they've been very, they were very open as to how they came up with these great ideas, they were open enough to share why they had to, what went wrong leading up to them. I was in a lot of sessions crisscrossing with people, so I'm gonna hit some bullets without going through each session all over. The building a strong partnership through the board from Harper College. The one thing that I took out of there was that their board meetings last no more than an hour or two, they never go over two hours. So I'm gonna be pulling some minutes.[1530.13][1530.13](LAUGHTER).
I don't know if that's real.
But there was, you know, but they did say we were to spend, we should spend more time evaluating our president with the goals that were brought up tonight and some other things, so we have some work to do for us. The first session I went to was the day before it started with the Chair Academy. I'm not gonna get into all of that, I got a book that came out of it, but one of the books was 10 Traits of a Good Chair, and I can, all I can do is commit that I'm gonna work through those 10 traits. May not ever master them, but I will at least address some of them. She also mentioned the Lake Washington School. Part of what they saw in Lake Washington in the state that they had is, they had 30-some institutions, I don't remember the exact count, and in the last 10 years, the state has hired over 100 new presidents in all those institutions. So when you look at what we did in the search for a president, and everything from search committees and bringing in an outside firm to help us do that, that's a lot of money that could be going to other things if we did searches right, made it so that the president would succeed. And it crisscrossed with something one of the other ones said, but it says here, "When we hire a president, our goal is to have our president serve 10 years or more." But what was behind that was, is we have to enable him, support him, him or her, and we have to put them in a position where that position is gonna survive for 10 years, or we're outspending more money on another search firm. So that was something additionally I took out of that one. I also went to One Door, Integrating Adult Education and Workforce Development, which was done by Dr. Brian up at Wabonzi College. What was interesting to that one is their southern border is our northern border, so a lot of what we see as issues for us, they're dealing with the same issues. And they had a couple stats that really hit me hard. One was during the pandemic, in the counties of Kendall and Grundy, 5.6 million jobs were lost, only 800,000 returned, and these are jobs for people that didn't have greater than a high school education. So when we look at the 12 by 12 by 12, we are now outside of that, only have a high school education. We do have some secondary education behind us to help us. And they also used a phrase I had never heard before, the sans-demic effect, mass exodus of baby boomers, lower labor force participation, and declining birth rates. And their question was, is how are we preparing our people to take these jobs that are gonna be open and expanding quantities? So that was out of Wabonzi College and Dr. Brian. I also sat in on a board policy governance one, I sat in with Shawnee College in Southern Illinois. They were at risk of losing their accreditation, so they started from scratch and rewrote their policies from the bottom up. And it was very enlightening on how they did that. I will talk to each of the people in our policy committee and probably go through their website and look at some of what they've done, because they're a true success story in that they've written their policies from scratch, but what it allowed them to do is they were able to separate their policies from operations of the college to governance. And if it's a governance, it belongs to the board. If it's an operations, it belongs to the president and his staff, not us. So they actually separated those a little bit better, and I wanted to see a little bit more how they did that. In some of the job programs that were listed by a couple firms, I went to one that was also in Washington State, they happen to be outside of Seattle, but what they've done is they've added a second teacher in a lot of the technical classes, the teacher is there to teach the Spanish language, or the Spanish-speaking people, English at the same time. And what we always assume is that if they don't understand the language, it makes it harder to get the job, but they attack it from a safety side. You go in there and all the safety warnings are in English, they know how to do their job, but they don't understand safety, they don't understand plant management, so they have somebody in there teaching that to the Spanish-speaking- Spanish-speaking people as well. And I thought that was pretty big, because that's not something I, you know, blinded by this, looked at, that, you know, there's a need for that as well. So again, there's, I have a ton of notes. I won't go through all of them, but it's interesting to see what other people do, because it helps us as a board, sit here when you do your reports, understand where you're coming from. And it's hard when we don't understand, or it's new to us, especially there's a dollar component behind it. But it's also important to see that when we look at what we have here tonight, and a lot of the applause here was, you know, very deserved for all of the different, you know, reports we had tonight. And we're in a spot where we're ahead of a lot of the other colleges that we saw presenting. A lot of them were presenting from an area of, we failed here, here's what we've done to improve. We're not in that spot, so I'm grateful to everyone in this room. So with that being said, I didn't make the nine o'clock target, so it means I'll never run for the board up at Harper College. I'll never
Yeah, but do remember Harper has committee of a whole meeting, so they have two meetings a month.
That's, it's okay. One is enough, and we'll just keep working on it. So Mr. President, if you don't have anything else, I think we can call for an adjournment.
We forgot the trustee agenda request that's on the agenda.
That was what we were doing, the 6.4 was the trustee agenda request, updates in ACCC conference report.
I know, we did the updates in the ACT conference, but I didn't think we got to the agenda requests.
That was all one bullet, but do you have a request?
Yeah, I do. I do. Can we, I know Kelly gave her report on what she did, and I did note that we've done significant, you mentioned about the budget. Being that the marketing budget that, that we just approved this past month was over 39,000, is there any way that we can get a return on investment to see where, because it looks like you're doing Alpha Media, NBC, Facebook, Google, TikTok, Snap, and Spotify, and it seems like we're spending quite a bit on the Google and the Alpha Media. Is there any way that we can get a return of investment, just to see so that if we are asked to increase the budget, that we know where we're going with return on investments for which portions of that to increase for you?
I think we're already seeing a rate of, a return on investment. I mean, we saw the enrollment numbers, and I think that's where we're going to get the gist of it.
Well, the thing is, like, when you're looking at Google, how many hits do we get, and do they go to the registration page? Because these were all registration ones. Is there a way of being able to calculate that out through the system?
So trustee Broderick, if I'm hearing you, I think this is a presentation or rather a report, not necessarily an agenda item, but an additional request for information that we can certainly provide.
Can you do that?
And we'll provide that to, to the entire board.
Okay. And then I have one more that I wanted to ask, and I'm going to ask how we handle this and if it should be an agenda item or not. When we have an elected official making statements on Facebook, and we get comments that have been made on by the local, local radio station, how do we handle that? Can we bring that up as a topic to discuss? Because it's a concerning factor that we have a board member that has done that, and it was basically all over WJOL last Friday morning.
I don't even have Facebook, so I have no idea what you're talking about.
How about, okay, I'm going to keep, I'm going to give you some grace. I'm just going to keep quiet.
So I can say something to that. It was part of the presentation in California. One of the things that did tell us, as trustees, social media used by trustees puts the messaging of our media relations at risk. That was the comment that they had made to us. So basically, chair, trustee, student, we should never post anything that puts this campus in a negative light, period. Ideally, we shouldn't post anything, period. All kinds of opinions are formed no matter what it is. If you're a Cub fan instead of a Sox fan, Bear fan instead of a Packer, and it can go on forever. Somebody judges you on anything you put in social media. So I would be real comfortable allowing our media relations to handle anything that's said about us or the campus. And it gets it to the point where we don't have to police ourselves.
Well, the history, though, was two years ago, I was censured. And I was censured on less of what was said than what was said on this one, because it was racially said. And we have an interracial community here of students and of employees. And I'm sorry, but I think this is something that needs to have direct attention by us, because we should not be, if I've got public complaining about it and concerned about it, and it's on the, on WJOL and picked up, that bothers me as a trustee and as someone who's sitting here. I support everyone that comes to this college. I don't like to hear anything that shows that we are showing any, anything that's disseminating against any other race, because we have all sorts of races of both employees and students. So I am voicing my concern since I was censured back because of that insurrection thing. I think it's more that the board has to look at something like that.
So you're looking for that to be added to an agenda?
Yes.
An agenda item as a discussion item? Is this
Possibly an action.
Can you amend that and include board members getting mug shots, please?
Mug shots?
Yeah.
Our students are watching.
Yes.
We know. We know.
We're all professionals. We work together. Let's just keep it straight.
We're concerned about that.
Our students are watching.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
We're adjourned.